Finished school district order, let the record show that the board members is present. This meeting has been duly called in the notice. This meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. First item?
First item on the agenda is work indication and pledge. So if you would please be in stand. And Ms. Coker, if you could easily dispossification, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day and for this evening. We ask you for your blessing and wisdom as we go forward. We ask for your protection over our district and all involved here through the summer, that you would watch over them and bring them all back safe from travel. Thank you as we go into this new school year. Lord, we ask for your direction and wisdom and the best way to lead this district. In Jesus' name.
Next item.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Miss Edith. Ms. Ellis, do you have any for open form?
Yes ma'am. First we have Ms. Renferson. She's supposed to be public turn around time.
Ms. Edith.
Ms. Edith, you know you get three minutes.
Great.
We will hold a timer. I'll let you know.
I'm really concerned about the turnaround plan that y'all sent out. I don't see that it makes the changes that we need. I feel like we need to go back to a five-day instructional week. I feel like that is in the best interest of the students. I'll tell you from my kids. My seven who were in Conley last year, we really suffered academically because of the school day school. I can give them that later. I think that needs to be an integral part of the turnaround plan. We need to get the kids back in school. I think we need to stop changing curriculum. We've had so many, especially at the elementary school. We've had IXL. I just, I don't, I can't even name them all, but we've had many different curriculums since my kids have been there. We need to stop teaching to the test. And I have, I'll tell you anecdotally, my kids' teachers at the elementary school will tell me, this is what we have to do because it's going to be on the STAR test. We don't need that. We need the kids taught to higher level. We need to group the kids based on their ability, not just their ages. We are doing exactly the opposite at the junior high. We're going to be grouping them by agents and putting everyone together. And for the kids who are academically advanced, I guarantee you that they're going to be leaving. I'm trying to get mine out. This is not what, this is not what we need. We need to teach the kids at their level what they need to learn. They don't want to be taught how to pass the STAR test. We need to stop doing the math testing. The math testing takes too much time, especially in elementary school. Takes too much of the time away from the teachers and the students. And it's really stressful on the kids. I feel like we are spending too much time training teachers. At the elementary school last year, we had, they had wacky Wednesdays where the schedule was completely different on the Wednesdays. There were not the intervention Fridays. And the teachers were busy with meetings and trainings. I think we need to get the teachers back with the kids, back in the classroom and not sitting for training. And I think that the younger grades, pre-K through 5th need two recesses a day. And there's a lot of evidence, data that supports that recess is good for social, emotional, and academic reasons. I know that the primary school is not one that y'all dealing with, but my first grader, he's six. His only recess of the day last year was at three o'clock in the afternoon. And that was just so that they can check the box that we have recess. That was not benefiting the kids. They need the, they need the free time. They need to work out, work up the wiggles. They need to be out, they need to play.
It's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we also have Ms. Courtney Skidley, and she's asked about student safety.
Great. You're good.
And here again, because student safety in this district continues to be ignored. If you look at social media, there's a pattern of students being abused, bullied, harassed. And many parents feel defeated by your administration not taking action. The Texas Education Code defines bullying as either a single significant act or pattern of acts that cause physical or emotional harm. And that very definition fits my daughter's experience, and yet nothing has changed. My daughter was left to choose between staying in a classroom where she felt unsafe and which is documented in her own bullying investigation, or to be punished for speaking out and change classes away from her friends. I brought this in concern to you, and I was interrupted to permit me from naming individuals who failed to act and prevent further assaults. Better law, even under ADA, does not require any district to allow a student to remain in an environment where they pose direct threats to the safety of others. This applies to every student, whether they're general education, 504, or IEP. So please stop deflecting your responsibility and protect the children in your district. More so, after one of the city council meetings, one of your board members took and pondered self to speak to someone about my situation stating, there's nothing the board can do, yet your board sets policies overseas as superintendent who's responsible for staff, and you have the responsibility to ensure a safe, safety environment for your children. So next time, Heather, if you're going to speak about my children and you're in action of their safety, please direct it with me directly.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item.
Next item is to consider approval of the consent agenda. Items included on the consent agenda are the meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting on May the 12th, 2025, and the special meeting on May the 12th of 2025. It's also the monthly financial report for May 2025. It's an update to the account signature card at American Bank for the Conley Junior High Activity Fund. And then included, kind of as a report, only no action is required to give you a month to actually review the items, is the TASB Localized Policy Update 125. Of course, there's several pages to this, once again. So we'll give you a month to review it, and then we can bring it back for action in a minute.
Any questions? I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on May 12, 2025, the special meeting on May 12, 2025, the monthly financial report for May 2025, and the update to the junior high activity account signature card at American Bank. Second.
Stephen Carter, motion, Diane Davis, second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 12, 2025, the special meeting on May 12, 2025, the monthly financial report for May 2025, and the update to the junior high activity account signature card at American.
Questions, they don't have any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate side. Any opposed, same side. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a report only, and it is presented by our tax attorney on delinquent properties entered into, and the possibility of entry amendment to CIST trust.
Good evening, board members. Madam Assistant Lieutenant, thank you for being here. I'm Conrad Buchanan. I am an attorney and a shareholder with McCrue, Sucker, Bragg, and Allen. What we do for the district, we collect a little property taxes and then also assist with school finance, support for Mr. Timmons. What we're talking about this evening is categorizing it as properties that are essentially underwater based on what the value of the property is and what the property taxes themselves are. Some of them have some unique characters, and what we're going to discuss is how to actually get those back on the taxable so that people are paying taxes on them, and hopefully actually doing some improvements. So that means that you'll have somebody consistently increasing the value and paying the property taxes upon them. A little bit of background about what we do. The vast majority of the accounts that they turn over to us for delinquent property taxes, we resolve one of a couple of ways. One, we either send out a notice and somebody comes in to our office and makes an arrangement. A lot of times we'll do phone calls, and then we even do onsite visits of property. In the very, very small minority of those cases, we actually have to file a suit to foreclosure on the property. And then in an even smaller minority of those cases, we actually sell these properties. A handful of those properties that we actually do sell are properties primarily that everyone's kind of forgotten. They're either airship properties, where everyone that had an interest in it has been deceased for one or more generations. Or in one of the instances that you have here this evening that we'll talk through here in a second, somebody literally says, yeah, I own it, I don't want anything to do with it, you need to just sell it. You've got three of these properties in front of you. 111 West Birch, 442 Bunch, and then Old Central Road. There's a number of lots there in the city of Lacy Lakeview. For those properties that have a really, really large tax balance that no one would be willing to come in, have a taxable closure sale, and pay that amount, we have the option to do what's called bidding of property in trust, which would then allow the board to resell the property at a lower price, figure out a price that someone would actually be willing to pay to come in and purchase this property. The upside of that would be that, again, somebody's going to actually start paying taxes on it. You get paid a little bit when the foreclosure occurs, and then maybe they'll do some improvements, whether it's building a house, whether it's doing some sort of improvement to the property that you get up on value, which brings in taxes and consistent payments. The reason that I like to talk to the board about it is, is that it does mean that all the taxes that are assessed at this point, not all of that's going to get paid, but really you've got two options. You can sit there and you can let it have taxes that pile up on it, and nobody does anything with it, or we can sell it for a lower amount and get it in somebody's hands that is going to actually pay taxes on it. Other thing is that when we resell those, this board will have the approval and pass a resolution to resell it. So you will get to see what we're going to actually sell these properties for. You'll get to look at all of them. These are the three biggest ones that we have here in Conley. The one in, at 111 West Birch was probably twenty or thirty years ago, lovely three bedroom home. It's pretty much blown out now and has about $40,000 worth of taxes, not just due to Conley, but all the entities. Similar story for the second one as well. That one actually used to have structure on it, thus the large number of taxes. And now it's being used to run some of these horses. And then this final one, which we're going to be created with, are about ten lots. And the reason that they haven't been sold at this point is that they have an on-court transmission line running straight through the middle of the city of Lacy Lakeview, who says you can't really build on. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, this is more just to give the board a heads up that we will try to proceed with these to get them resold for a smaller amount. And again, the board will have the authority to pass that resolution when that time does come and we can put it back up for sale at a lower price. So are there any questions from the board or anything that I can explain further?
No, would you repeat what you said about the property with the transmission line? It is not billable, it's just lots?
That is correct. So if you look actually a couple of pages back, there is a picture there of Old Central Road, and that is a picture of the transmission lines going straight through the lots. The only other thing that's kind of adjacent to those lots, I believe the city of Lacy Lakeview is a pump station there. There's also a nursery there. But for really residential purposes, which it is essentially a residential neighborhood, it is not billable on any of those lots. So our idea for that one is probably maybe get it in the hands of the city of Lacy Lakeview because nobody else really has a use for it, and maybe they'll have some purpose for it.
Any questions?
Great, thank you, board members.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Next item.
Next item, it actually doesn't appear on your notes, but it is on the agenda. That's what I was just plugging in to make sure. And that is a review of where we are with the Conley Co. Roofing Projects. So I attached, actually.
Right here.
I attached the summary of what their recommendations are. He was tied up, did not get down here this evening from Arlington, but he is coming back tomorrow morning. He's going to sit down with Mr. Timmons and Mr. Richard to go over all of the specifics. Currently, it's waiting for the engineer's final stamp of approval, and he is aware that they have to adjust the dates and a couple of other things because the intent was to get this out earlier. But he, once all of this is put together and stamped on by the engineer, then what they will do is they will post it out there as far as to receive bids. He feels like we can still get the project completed before the end of the summer, that it would be, have to be kind of a quick turnaround. But once all of the bids and everything are returned, then they are going to go through. They're going to vet all of the bids and bring their recommendations to us, which we would have to kind of approve as far as in the next board meeting. Did I miss anything, Mr. Timmons?
Just that, I mean, it's an impressive package that you see. It's exactly what we wanted to use their consulting for. It's their expertise and how we should move forward to best address those issues, so.
Do we need to call, the minute they get it done and pushed it, do we need to call a emergency meeting or a special meeting so that we can get this done, so they can get started?
Well, I think it'll depend on when we decide to have our July board meeting. As far as, because of course they're going to have to have it out there, they're going to have to have it posted. We're already closing in quickly on the end of June, so.
We need to, by all means, let's do a special meeting so that we can get this started and over with.
Well, and just to make sure I interject, this, you know, this will be released to people who are TIPS vendors, which most of the roofers that are out there are TIPS USA vendors. So, you know, where an RFP would have been posted thirty days, because they've already gone through that process with TIPS USA, they really are just giving us their price. So again, like Ms. Bartleworth said, time is of the essence, but hopefully I'll have a better answer.
More. Okay, that sounds great. And that's a.
That's a good one.
We're done. All right, next item.
Next item is consider impossible action to approve the Conley Elementary School turnaround plan and the Conley Junior High turnaround action plan. It is attached as far as in this agenda for your review. It outlines everything that Ms. Plomet had. Well, it looks really funny when you open it.
Because it's always totally. Nips.
Yeah, in this page orientation. Well, it looks better, but it's sideways if you actually did click the page orientation to rotate it. So I'll have to figure out how to fix that. But it is outlining, as we've said for quite some time, that we are very well aware of the TEA expectations and what they would propose happen. As far as with us, we've been working with the regional service center very closely over the last couple of years. The big thing is going through the till process, and we have focused on the observation feedback. And we have focused on school cultures and routines in the last couple of years. We want to continue that, but then this year adding data-driven instruction to that. And then also the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials in RLA and in mathematics. We've been using the math curriculum. It was just branded differently. It was Carnegie and Eureka as a private distributor. State of Texas purchased it from Carnegie and Eureka, and they have rebranded it to call it Bloop on it. They did make a few adjustments with it. It was designed for 180, 80 days of instruction, and now they have designed it for 155 days of instruction. And that's for everybody in this state, and that is the number of days that we have in our calendar. They are slowly going to start releasing it. Whenever I say slowly, as far as with the RLA, the new state adopted or state rebranded high-quality instructional material will not be ready to be put in the classroom until 2031. So we went ahead and adopted the Amplify, which is for grades six through eight in reading, language arts. And that is actually what it is based upon. The reason I was told that it's taken so long to release the secondary RLA curriculum is simply because they have to go through and vet every one of the text and stories and novels and so forth to ensure that they are on grade level. So I am trying to figure out how I can. Okay. On mine, I don't know if it updates with y'all, but if you go to the page transition and you go to page orientation and rotate it, I don't know. Counter-clockwise twice, it worked for me. Could you get it? Right there. If we had real close, just a little sliver. Yeah, okay, so they go here to page orientation, right next to the percentage. If you hit that dropdown and then rotate either clockwise or.
I might still do this.
Is this a sliver of it? Well. Hi, can we get a copy printed for you real quick?
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely the possible action to approve the Conley Elementary School and Conley Junior High turnaround action plan. Second.
Stephen Carter, motion, Chief Lowery, second, to postpone indefinitely the Conley Elementary School turnaround action plan.
Motion, second floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate side. Any opposed, same side. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is consider impossible action to approve the contract with ESC 12 for strong foundations planning and implementation with Lasso Grant. Ms. Eink, Ms. Eink, sorry.
So the learning acceleration support opportunities, or the Lasso Grant, we received that and will be contracting with the service center for strong foundations planning and implementation, which is regarding all of the HQA and what we've been discussing today. There's a specific percentage that you have to spend with your provider that the service center has won. So we just need your approval on that.
Make a motion. So.
Second. Chief Lowery, motion, Heather Johnson, second, to approve the contract with ESC 12 for strong foundation planning and implementation with Lasso Grant.
Motion, second floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate side. Any opposed, same side. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is consider impossible action to approve the Conley ISD Police Department Policy Manual. This was actually shared with you last month, if you remember, in the consent agenda. So hopefully you had an opportunity to actually go in and review that. Chief Sanders is here and able to answer any questions that you may have.
Hello.
Hello.
I want to apologize, although I see y'all ninety pages from only three. Hope you're finding tapos, I'm not a secretary. But I feel this pretty hard, do you want?
This will be read over at Lambaline.
Okay. So this policy is now required by TCOE, kind of like TEA is now requiring school districts to send in their policies. It's the same kind of thing. Several of these policies I've already sent to our field agent. He's looked through it and said they're good. So most of these are already mandated. Basically, they're giving us samples, and we're just copying and pasting and putting in what we need to. Some of these I've actually gone through and thought, you know, I don't know if I want to get in the, if I want our officers to get naked or pursue. So how do I need to word that? And so I've changed a few wording on that in case it's a felony stop or a DWI, possible DWI. That's basically it. It's a lot. I know it's going to be a continuous update. I like TEA is now updating, constantly asking for us to update. So do you have any questions, anything, what's up, anything to give, like, oh gosh?
I want to ask one that's not necessarily outlined in the policy, but I know some of the feedback that we received as far as on, from surveys that we have done was about officers not being out and patrolling outside of schools. Can you please explain your.
Absolutely. So, you know, years ago, officers, we did work a lot of road patrol and focused a lot before and after school with issues in the traffic. But now, you know, the first thing in the morning, like I've said before, is ninety percent of active shooters occur within the first hour of the day. And so my philosophy is I'd rather them be in the buildings rather than out working traffic. Lacy Lakeview and Conley ISD Police Department have a really, a great, great working environment. If there's anything I ever ask of them, they're there, more than willing. If we have an area that we feel like this is a problem, we will address it. But typically, you know, when you see a cop, you're going to put your seatbelts on, you're going to slow down. And so I honestly don't see a lot of, I know y'all are probably thinking, what? Cause their eyes closed. But I'm not seeing a lot of traffic issues. You know, in other school districts I've been at, they were definite. You could work traffic all day long. But at Conley, you know, typically, especially if they see the patrol car, they slow down, they put their seatbelts on, they act and drive the way they should. And so I really want the guys and girls to focus on their impetus, whether that's helping out in the morning with their traffic some use sometimes or what have you. But that's really why, it's not that we're not wanting to. I have one officer that loves working traffic. You know, he'd be out there every day, allow that, but I want him also in the building. I think it's kind of a give and take, you know, be out there every now and then, be in the buildings most of the time.
Can they post their vehicles at the entrance of exit just so that they're facing the road so people think they're in there?
I guess we're going down the wrong aisle, you know? And it's honestly almost always a new person. They're like, I had no idea, I'm so sorry.
That's right.
You know, just warn them and go on, but. Any other questions?
Go now, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Conley ISD Police Department Policy Manual.
Stephen Carter, motion, Heather Johnson, second, to approve the Conley ISD Police Department Policy Manual.
Motion, second floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate side. Any opposed, same side. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Consider impossible action for Conley ISD to adopt policies regarding homeschool student participation in UIL extracurricular activities. In the board background, I attached some information on this topic. In the most recent legislative action or legislative session, there is a new provision that talks about homeschool participation in UIL activities. Previously, how it was is a school district had to adopt a policy to allow students to participate. So basically, if you didn't have a policy that said, yes, homeschool students can participate in athletics, then you couldn't accept them. Now they have basically flip-flopped that, and after September 1st, it will blanket allow homeschool, homeschool students to participate in any UIL activities or events. That's athletics, academics, you know, speech, theater, anything like that. So after talking to or receiving information both from Texas High School Coaches Association, Coach Garrick and I also talked about it. I also spoke to our general counsel. We feel that the recommendation should be to adopt a policy that prohibits allowing them. And one of the big reasons is because we would not necessarily receive funding for the student, but we would be expending a lot of funds in order to support the student in extracurriculars, whether it be through having to have additional entry fees whenever you get to academic UIL or some of those events, or having to provide additional uniforms, or if your numbers grow for that section and having to have additional staff just to cover it. We don't need them for the other seven periods of the day. So those were some of the reasons that Coach Garrick and I had both discussed when we were looking at that. In your board packet, I actually attached the correspondence that we received from Texas High School Coaches Association along with the background.
Yeah, this is Senate Bill 401 and House Bill 2674. Have we had students request? We have not. The big verbiage change in it is basically if they live in our district and we do not allow them to play in sports here, they can go to the next district that allows them to. And as of right now, I have not had anybody in our area or in central Texas accepting it.
And I will say, many a times we may not have that request because we also have the Texas Women's Association. They basically have all of the same events that we would. And it is actually for specifically homeschool students. TASB had actually drafted the two, a model of the two policies, which would be FML and FDL that are related to this, that I also attached to the board background. And they just highlighted what the changes would be. And I'll also say, all of the other members of our DUC have all indicated that they are proposing to make this adjustment to their local policies as well.
To prohibit?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the Conley ISD to adopt policies regarding homeschool student participation in UIL extracurricular activities.
Motion.
Stephen Carter, motion, Amy Ryan, second. So Stephen Carter, motion, Amy Ryan, second, to approve CONASB to adopt policies regarding homeschool students participation in UIL extracurricular activities.
Motion, second floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate side. Any opposed, same side. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item, this is a report only as well, and it is concerning our banking RFP timeline. Mr. Timmons?
So at the last meeting, I had told you all that my plan was to come to this.
So, at the last meeting, I had told you all that my plan was to come to this meeting with the completed RFP and that we would have a vendor selected, a bank selected. After talking with Region 12, wanted to make sure we had all the polish right on the RFP. We ended up still within the timeline, and still within the timeline, we needed Conley and still within TEA's timeline, is what I meant, the first timeline. We actually released it on May 30th. The banks that we sent it to have until the 19th to submit questions. We will answer those questions by the 25th. The deadline for them to get the proposal to us is the 10th. And then I had put that I thought our expected award night would be July 21st. If the meeting changes for whatever reason, it's still, it'll have been posted long enough, it's still... We did send it, you are required by the education codes that govern that process, or the administrative codes that govern that process, to send it to any bank within your school district. Not having one, we were able to select banks in our area. I went with banks that I knew, there are a lot of banks that won't accept us depository bids because they aren't interested in that business. And so I did send it to four that had expressed interest or I knew other districts were using. I should have that process to be wrapped up in July, so...
And for the record, if you have any credit, I mean, we do have educators.
Perfect, thanks, Sarah. Yes, any questions on that? Next item.
Next item is, this is also a report on the underpartaging action. There's been a lot of discussion about House Bill 2, and a lot of information then has been in the news about the significant increase that it is providing to Texas schools. So we have been going through and collecting some information, and we just wanted to share this with you as far as potential impact it could have on our budget as we move forward with, trying to designate our budget for the upcoming year. Of course, we're continuing to kind of wait for correspondence to come out.
You can just find that one, Mr. Timmons, so that I can read it. We can, sure. So, a little bit of preamble.
No, 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 I'm sure.
Oh, he said the other way, sorry.
No, no, you're good.
Apologies. I did what the man told me to do.
You did perfect.
A little bit of preamble before we get started. This really is a presentation about how House Bill 2 is going to ultimately end up impacting the budget plan in '25, '26. Just for the record, and we'll talk a little bit about it, we, up until November, had a plan based on information that we thought how this legislative session was going to progress. And so I'll even kind of show you what that was going to start to look like, because we'd already made some moves for that. And then, you know, I can certainly answer any questions. I'll be able to give you some rough estimates, I think I tell you all this every year, it's June 16th. So, you know, certainly take notes, but just know that these numbers might be different in seventy-six days when we adopt an actual budget, okay? So, this is our starting point, this is the number that I have been living with for the whole year, is a $2.6 million deficit. And so there was going to be a plan to get us to balance, because that's ultimately how my stomach with no ulcers would love to live. And so... And we've had lots of conversations about having the fund balanced, be able to do this for a year, potentially two. But there's only so much runway, and so decisions have to be made. We really, yet again, expected the legislature to help us out in a way that we thought we were going to help. And so maybe before I say anything else, I am a third-generation educator. Nothing makes me happier than teachers getting a pay raise. It's amazing, it should have happened years ago, should have happened when I was in the classroom. But, but this is where we're at, and so it's a great, great thing. This is not a dogpile on the House bill that ended up coming to us. This is just a, here's where we get to go from here type conversation, okay? So, we had that 2.6. Early in the conversations, back in April, when the House first sent... We knew before the session started, based on the conversations that had taken place, we didn't know, because we don't know anything. We were strongly, we strongly felt that the House was going to bring forward the finance plan, and the ESA voucher plan was going to come from the Senate. So, as you saw, as soon as the session started, House Bill 2 was in the finance plan. And Jill and I, Ms. Ballberg and I, had gone and heard Chairman Huberty, who was the author of the bill, we heard him speak multiple, multiple times. And you guys have heard me speak many, many times on the basic allotment. The basic allotment is that first building block, that 6160, of how we can start to make those decisions locally on how we're going to fund our school. We certainly have to hit those spending requirements. But then increases to the basic allotment allow us to do things like, after our board shows us and invests in us in a 5% increase, we're able to come back and use a basic allotment increase to help balance out after a decision like that. So, the top half, and these numbers came from one of our representative offices' email. So, this isn't numbers that didn't exist at some point, these are numbers that we were given as runs. So the top half, you see, there's a, for next year, the bill that left the House chamber was going to be 1.701 million, right? 1.7 million dollars. That was going to be helpful, right? If you remember the number I started with, that 2.6. So, that's the numbers that Ms. Ballberg and I are working through, okay? So we're going to come back to this in just a second.
And the top line on that, whatever it says, original House bill, one, the first line was 2026, second line was 2027.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. So, so it would have been an increase for next year of 1.7, and 2627, it would have been an increase on top of that of 1.9, okay? So again, in my mind, path to balanced budget, okay? That's what the House, original House plan would have done for us. On our end, I was a super-popular guy all year here because we ended up cutting or not filling 33 positions here. That was the last count as of yesterday. So, we felt like we were doing our part to get to a balanced budget, and the salaries associated with those positions are, that's a rough estimate, 1.3. That doesn't include some of the other additional things that the district, like our TRS payments and those sorts of things. That was straight salary that we were going to absorb to try to get to balance. So, a quick math in your head, 1.7, 1.3, I was feeling fairly good. If it wasn't going to be balanced, it was going to be just shy of it, right? So then what we got was the Senate version. And the Senate version, again, has lots of great things in it. Great things that are going to be there for our teachers, they deserve that raise. But these runs come from a group that many, many school districts are part of called MoCasing. They're well-respected in the state. I am going to point out one piece of data before we get too far into this. I'll leave one for him and I'll work off a paper copy. So, the first thing that I do want to point out, because I do think it's an important part of this conversation, is if you look, they use numbers, typically they get them off our paper report, or they get them off our attendance, oh my gosh, what is that called? I can't remember, I'll send it, the number that we turn into the state, our attendance projection, there it is. So they have us at 210165. I do want to point out, before we get too far into that, our yearly ADA last year... Ms. Ballberg is passing a copy to the board. This is the average for the entire year. All of these numbers that we're fixing to talk about on this sheet of paper is based on 2101 ADA, okay? Not enrollment, 2101 ADA. Our average ADA last year was 2022, okay? When you average out the entire year, it's a 2022, okay? Our enrollment on the last day of school was 2087. So, my whole point in bringing all this up is, we're running a little bit lower. And if we look at the enrollment trend line, I mean, at one point, we were up around 2186 during this year, and we ended the year with 2087, about a hundred kids less than we had in October, for snapshot. So, let me jump back, I apologize, everybody.
No, you're fine.
You can imagine the fun I had in my office. All day, yeah. Okay, so I want you to turn to page four real fast, and we're going to talk briefly about some of those numbers that are there in the middle. So those numbers that are red that I circled for you, that's a lot of the new money that House Bill 2 has, the Senate version of House Bill 2 has brought us, okay? It's that teacher retention allotment, that's the thing that you've heard the most about. When you hear about, for school districts of Conley's side, 5,000 kids or less, where those three- to four-year teachers are going to get the $4,000 raise, and the five-year-plus teachers are going to get an $8,000 raise, that's the money that they're talking about. So, they are funding those raises, okay? And that's great, we very much appreciate that, there's nothing bad about that. You can also see that we're going to have increased money for school safety. We're going to have some increased money for special ed evaluations. I also want to mention, I think the conversation took place a little bit earlier, but there is money, and we can get into the weeds on it here in a minute, there's $45 per enrolled student for us to pay, so classroom teachers, three and four and then five years up, are all accounted for. Everybody else that's not an administrator, Senate Bill 2, House Bill 2, excuse me, gives us $45 per kid. If you want to do the math real fast, 2100 kids times $45 is about $94,000. I divided that by the 300-ish employees that we have, that's not an accurate number. It amounted to about a $450 raise funded for everybody else. Paraprofessionals, librarians, nurses, anybody that's not a classroom teacher, that's not in the classroom 51% of the day, over four hours of the day. It's about a $450 raise, so, an item to consider there, okay? I also want to point out, there's a thing that I highlighted there, it's the allotment for basic costs is helpful. It's $108 per enrolled kid, if I remember that number correctly. But for Conley, we're estimating that next year it's going to be $243,270. This is the answer to the conversation we've had about no adjustments since 2019. So, it's written into the law that we are only able to spend that money on specific things, like transportation costs that have gone up, like insurance premiums that have gone up. That money is also set aside for, when we give all these raises, you have to pay more benefits, you have to pay more TRS. That money is also there to pay that. It'll be on a slide coming up or on a document later. So, next year, we're going to have $243,270 to spread around to those different things. Our insurance here at Conley, next year, we're going to have a 5% increase, it's going to be about $620,000 for our entire property and casualty. So that will help, I'm not saying that it won't help. But also, our insurance is going to be about $620,000. So, now I'll direct your attention to the back page, and this is the page that I really just kind of wanted to make this final point. Again, it's all helpful. But under current law, this year, this purple number, we are set to receive $24,796,000 in revenue. That's our local tax collections, and that is the state aid that comes to us into our 199, our general fund. Under the new law, under that 89 reg, our new revenue will be $26,639,180. It's good, right? If you look at the difference, we are going to go up $1,843,119 in additional property tax collections and state aid. That number goes up, I'm a happy man, right? But, because of the way, because of the way House Bill 2 was written, an important panel is this bottom panel. So, there's that $1,843,119, that's some new money. But because of the way the teacher pay raise is written, we are required by law to pay it in the way that we're going to pay it. And we were going to pay it anyway, so we weren't going to not, we're not in违反 the law. But know that that number estimated for Conley is $925,902. So, remember earlier, I showed you the information that was emailed to Ms. Ballberg, and it was 1.9? That 1.9 was going to go to the basic allotment. We would have been required by law to give teacher raises on that as well. But then after we had paid the required teacher raises from that, we would have been able to have more than $450 left over for paraprofessionals and other support staff. We would have been able to possibly address a little bit better that $625,000 insurance, the property casualty. We would have been able to put a little bit more money towards transportation, any of our infrastructure, all of the things I'm about to show you as considerations for next year. So, the last number that, while this 1.8 is really important, this last green number is the number that, in terms of, remember my original thesis, get back to balanced? We're going to have $808,886 to try to help us get back to balance on a 2.6 million deficit budget. We still have the attrition on the 1.3-ish on salaries, so 800,000 with that. You of course have, so teachers will get 8,000. We're still in the process of trying to figure out, like, the legislature passes the law, TEA interprets the law, and then the TEA and organizations tell us exactly how TEA interpreted the law. So we're still trying to figure out exactly what that 8,000 raise means. If teachers still get a step on top of the 8,000, if it's just a flat 8,000. We're still trying to figure out that piece, because obviously, they funded us for 8,000. Let me see. We are, so one of the reasons that I don't, so, so that 26.6 is an estimate for our state aid revenues next year, okay? And like I said, the caveat of it's based on that ADA, that enrollment, okay? One of the reasons that I do not have a good judge of expenses right now is that piece that I just told you. We're trying to figure out, how exactly can we communicate this? Do we have to make the $8,000 part of our salary schedule as it was previously adopted? What we have been told is that teacher retention allotment is in law. It will be funded in the same way that the instructional materials allotment is funded. If you know anything about the instructional materials allotment, though, is that it varies year to year. And so, the concerning question I think people are trying to get an answer to is, it's $8,000 this year, and it's going to be $8,000 in '26, '27. What's it going to be '27, '28? What's it going to be '29, '30 school year? And if we've adopted $8,000, and now all of a sudden you're going to give us $2,000, who's going to come up with $6,000 so that my teachers don't get to pay that? And how do we communicate that to them so that they know Conley's going to pay this, like, our portion is this, the legislature is this piece, and then your total salary is the two? I think those are questions that are still being asked. Until I know what our salaries are, because 80% of our, 85% of our expenditures are salaries, I don't have a good handle on what our total expenses are at this point. I promise you, no one wants to know that number more than me, so I'll get that to you as soon as I can. The last thing that I wanted to mention, obviously, this is all conversations about, this is all conversations about people and... this is all conversations about, uh, people and, and how we're going to pay for people, but then some other budget considerations. Um, these are not in any particular order. I tried to semi-prioritize them based on conversations we've had. I think people very much appreciate the, uh, the, the thousand dollars that we have tried to keep since, uh, the COVID tester money was gone, and we couldn't do those incentives anymore, so we paid for those locally. Um, the, the board has shared, it's a, it's a priority of y'all's to provide our students, when they leave here, a meal. And so that estimate depend upon, we, we've kind of talked about some ideas and how we could possibly save some money on that. Um, I'm, I'm still keeping a big number there, though, for my own purposes. We have to pay our fees to the appraisal district. We need Skyward software to be able to run the finance and the student side of things. Um, we have our Region Twelve service contract for all the different things that they help us with. Um, and the supports that they give us. Um, HR has their programs. There are things that we have to pay for out of TIA, that insurance that I mentioned. We have to have copiers, custodians, uh, transportation. And then right now, while we're still using Region Twelve for payroll and, and business services, um, while we don't have a payroll partner, and we're using them, that's that number. And then there's those conversations we've had about replacement cycles. If you get behind on this, is it harder to play catch-up? Um, next year on technology, we're looking at junior high laptops. Um, I don't know where are those G-six? Mr. Ty?
Uh, junior high.
Junior high, so. Um, and then the elementary kiddos, we're on the six-gen iPads that, that need to be cycled out. Um, band, uh, the, the beauty of band program that is on the rise is that kids are interested and they want to participate. Which means if you don't have instruments for them, the, and I don't think, you don't get good numbers for kazoo's. So we need some actual instruments there. Uh, and then again, on the bus, um, if you get behind in that process, you know, um, it, it can be hard to dig out of later, and so. Um, I try not to make it bleak. It is definitely better than where we were a year ago, two years ago. I, if you ask me to bet a dollar, I don't, well, I don't see a world where we're at a two-point-six again. Just because I don't want to live with a two-point-six again. Um, I'll just tell you one other thing anecdotally, and, and this is just a, a pattern that was pointed out to me. But the last three cycles, um, our legislature passes a bill to fix finance. And then in two years, they hear the grumbles of what maybe isn't working. And then two years after that, they pass a bill to fix it. And then two years of grumble, two years they fix it. Which means with the current funding model, if we follow that process a fourth time now, um, we're four years from relief coming. And I know that we have a fund balance that we are, are, um, happy with. But if money's not coming until twenty-eight, twenty-nine to help us out with some of these basic allotment type expenditures, um, we, we really are going to maybe have to look at some ways to create a little bit more runway for ourselves, so. I'll entertain any questions. I can go back over anything if I went over anything too fast.
No, and we did, we sent through the, the policy update, or legislative session update on Saturday, and it was no different.
And I will say, um, I shared with Mr. Han and Mr. Timmons today that Tasby is actually doing a compensation and eighty-nine legislative update because it keeps going back and forth as far as people's interpretation. And we were told that we would get advisement from the commissioner. He sent something last week, but it is still not super clear. Um, Tasby's take on it is, we need to add that to our salary schedule, period. And then it was also indicated on there that if you wanted to do anything different, they would recommend talking to your general counsel. Like if you were going to list it as, this is our salary schedule, and then this is what it will be by adding the four thousand for the eight thousand dollars. But we don't ever know which way.
But how can you put that in a salary schedule if you don't even know the employee that's coming? Oh, this is where you could be, or this is where you could be. And we have now two salary schedules moving forward.
So, it's very interesting because there's a whole lot more to this. Like there is even a point where they are about to start changing the titles of certi, of certificates, teaching certificates, where it can be a residential certificate, and if you employ somebody with that certificate, they get an additional six thousand dollars. For the first five years that they're employed. If they're going through an alternative certification and they've completed it, then it's this amount that they will get. There is also a provision in there that if you hire someone under District of Innovat, District of Innovation, they must be paid less than a certified person at that level. Which I don't, I don't necessarily have an issue with, and we were kind of talking through, you know, how that would work here. Um, but it's about to be all over the place, and I know that, uh, Betsy attended last week for TIA, and she said it was more than just about TIA, it was so much more about the strategic compensation plan. They are really pushing that they want teachers based on their outcomes, on their student outcomes. So it may be that you have a teacher who, she has great student growth in one year, so she'll get this much additional. But the next year, if she doesn't have that same student growth, then you're moving her back down. So it's always going to be like a moving target, basically, for teachers.
They're great at that.
It's not once you've accomplished this, like with the TIA, you get it for five years, it's, it's kind of the, the back and forth. So, they are really, um, encouraging districts to get away from this many years of service equal this much as far as in, in compensation. So it's, it's always going to kind of be a moving target, so there is a whole lot. So there may be several different compensation schedules that, that have to, that have to be put out there.
And then we still have the ESA to play a role in all of this. If we're at the twenty-eighty-seven, two hundred of them decide they're going to a different district than now we're at. And all of those scales change, but our salary structure still stays the same.
The CFO joke is that your budget is broken on day one of enrollment, of attendance.
Yeah, I mean, how do you know? I, I mean, that's, there is so many crystal ball, oh, let's put numbers, and none of them mean anything because we still don't know what this means. Even Saturday, they were giving us a, yes, a blanket, I don't know, really.
Right.
And, I mean, that is, two of our representatives for Tasby, they sit there every day and...
Well, and they're all waiting for the final draft and guidance that comes through. The other thing from the Tasby in, information is, it doesn't matter if it's a part-time teacher. If they have more than five years' experience, they get the full eight thousand dollars. So you can be a retire, rehire, collect your retirement, be hired by a district, we're paying your TRS contribution. And then even if you're out of time, you still get the full eight thousand dollars. And someone even said, well, that's going to highly inflate your daily rate. It is, but what do you do? You know, so, we may even have some full-time, oh, no, full-time teachers are sitting in here. That's, that, go back and say, well, I'm just going to work part-time because I could be making the same amount for half-time. And I was just, whenever I looked at it, I went, wow.
I do know when Mr. Carter asked Ms. Coker, five principals all of a sudden sat up.
Without a doubt.
There's a teacher out there, maybe. Uh, and just the last two things I wanted to mention, I mean, again, it's not that, I mean, it's great that teachers are getting paid. I had heard from, uh, someone that there is a push that they would do this for the next two sessions. And so, I mean, in a world where they would do eight dollars, I mean, you're talking about somebody making thirty-two thousand dollars more four years from today, like, that's amazing. That's awesome. As, as a family of educators, I'm telling you, that's life-changing money. Um, it, it's just, hopefully, there's, there's going to be the resolve to keep doing that if other things pop up along the way. Um, and for as badly as we need classroom teachers, there, there's a lot of things on the balance sheet, um, that also wouldn't hurt with some attention, and so. Uh, we, we just need to make sure we are appreciative of the things that were done, uh, and we are, um, while still voicing the concern about some of those other things respectfully because those other things aren't going to go away either, and they're also not going to go down either.
No, they're going up.
The, the last thing I would mention is, the, the conversations we've had in the past have all been, if they will adjust the basic allotment. And, and the other thing that was implied to me pretty strongly is, um, we're going to see far more targeted investments in public education than we will see blanket basic allotment additions going forward. Um, and so, there's maybe some fundamental things that, that we will do as a district so that we can get to balance.
Well, and then the whole harmless for the, the hundred and forty thousand, uh, attack exemption, that's not even playing a role in this yet.
Correct. Um, I did actually, I sat in on a webinar with a superintendent in the Panhandle who actually said, when the hundred and forty takes an effect, he has, um, a hundred and fifty more kids, and he'll get less money after, um, depending upon how that all shakes out, so. Uh, he's in a recapture district, and, and of course, those guys. Anyway, that's it for me, unless y'all have any additional questions?
No, sir.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
Next item on here is to set date, time, and location for the July regular board meeting. Um, we have it on here as July the twenty-first. That would actually be the third of the day.
And I will be out of town, that's my only vacation this year.
I'll be out of town before, before we get to fourteen, so.
That's fine with me. Hold on, let me make sure before I move on. Yes, yes, I'm calling the nineteen through the twenty-six, so. July twenty-eighth. Uh, uh, we definitely need to have a special meeting then for that roofing, because we're going to wait the whole interview live, there's no way.
Hold on, I'm good. Anytime before the thirteenth, and anytime after the twentieth.
Okay.
So what was that date?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. And then we'll wait and see what the timeline is, and then I can just notify everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so as far as for my superintendent's report, just an update, I was able to reattach the pad into the workbook, so it is in there, and it is in landscape orientation. Um, I also sent each one of you individually a link to the actual, uh, copy of, or to the actual turnaround plan, so.
Then I'll like the pane and address that right now.
Okay.
I do, yeah. Uh, no, go finish yours.
Okay. Uh, the other thing, Mr. Timmons also kind of covered as far as our ADA for the year, and then it came out as far as two thousand twenty-two students, which actually ended up being a ninety-four point one eight percent attendance. It's still improved from where it was, our goal this year was ninety-five percent. But you may recall that we had some pretty big hits whenever it came to the flu and weather. Those were our two big things, especially in January and February. Um, so that, that's where we ended as far as with the year. The other update that I wanted to give you is just where we are as far as with staffing. Um, early childhood, congratulations, she gets applause, she's finished today, as of today. And then, um, at the primary school, and these are the latest numbers that I have, we're still looking for three teachers, two aides. Elementary, we are looking for, uh, sorry, we're looking for five teachers and two aides. Uh, junior high, four teachers and an aide, and high school, two teachers. So we're actually sitting, okay, um, we're looking for about fifteen teachers as far as district-wide, so. And we're looking for, um, six, six aides as far as throughout the district. So, the principals have really been working hard as far as to get all of those, um, positions filled. So that is, and then he covered a lot of it as far as the finance aspect of it. And, I believe, a little stack of things, so we're going to have to say that in the house.
We will now return to item number six, make a motion to approve the Conley Elementary turnaround action plan.
Stephen Carter motioning, Keith Lowery second to approve the Conley Elementary school turnaround action plan.
Motion taken on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign. Any opposed, same sign, all voting for, motion carries. This board will now adjourn to executive session, pursuit, section, Texas Open Media Act, section, well, page... Five-five, one point oh seven-four, five-five, one point one oh two. At seven-thirty-five.
Hold on. Okay, it started.
Nine oh one coming out of, uh, executive session, first item.
First item is consider resignation of personnel.
Need a motion?
Second. Uh, Danny Rains made the motion, it was seconded by Heather Johnston, is who I heard. Is there, okay.
Motion taken on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign, all voting yes, motion carries.
Next item is consider employment of personnel.
Need a motion? Need a second?
Second. Keith Lowery made motion, Diane Davis seconded to, uh, approve employment of personnel as presented.
Motion taken on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign, all voting for, motion carries, next item.
Next item is adjournment. Second. Danny Rains made the motion, Heather Johnston seconded to adjourn at nine oh two PM. Okay, yep.
Motion taken on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign, any opposed, same sign, all voting for, motion carries. Thank y'all, have a great day.